Good evening, this is the June 13th, 2019 Town of Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Noreen, would you please take the roll call?
Anthony McCarron.
Here.
Lisa McQuaid.
Here.
Bonnie Franzen.
Here.
James McKnight.
Here.
Jason Sorenski is absent. Jeff Manson.
Here.
And John Allegro.
Here.
Thank you.
With that, we have a quorum so we can conduct business. I'd like to point out the fire exits. There are exits to the rear by the kitchen, exits the main entrance where everybody comes in, and then there are another set of exits over here behind me. With that, let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda is 150. Okay. Why don't you come up, Dave? And just for the board members, I'd like to introduce Ashley Tori. Did I say that right? Tori, who is our new council. She is with Burke, Mealy, Golden, and Naughton.
Yes.
And she will be now attending our planning board meetings and providing us sound advice in the future. So, welcome, Ashley.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, so with that, we will now take up Valley View. And this is for an accessory apartment?
Yes.
Okay. I know, Jeff, you had an opportunity to do some detailed review, so I'll actually let you lead off on this application.
So there were some things that I had right off the bat that I think need to be addressed in the application package. The application defines the project as an accessory apartment. On the EAF form, it lists in a brief description of the proposed action, rather than accessory apartment, it's proposed two-story house addition, which kind of is in line. Then on the map, it's showing proposed one-story house addition. So somewhere we need to get that in line. My understanding is with the zoning regulations on accessory apartment, that they have to be built within the existing structure of the house. And the proposed size of the accessory apartment is for 1,440 square feet. The total existing structure is roughly 1,200 feet. And the zoning allows for an accessory apartment that is somewhere either the lesser of two, 750 square feet, or 30 percent of the total square footage. What I calculated was, again, based on the existing square footage of the house, 30 percent would give us 369. Yet there's a minimum size for accessory apartments of 450. Can you give us an idea for sort of more about what the project proposal is? Because there's some things that are unclear here.
Sure, absolutely. We're proposing a one-story addition of 750 square feet for an accessory apartment. Again, it is not built, so we're here before you asking for permission to do so. The owner would like to add this addition on and use it as an accessory apartment. We understand the parameters of the zoning code. We're asking that perhaps that this could move forward, or if we can continue with the process to see if it could be approved, rather than building it first as an addition and then coming back to you and asking for it to be an accessory apartment.
I'm just trying to navigate to where you are. You're off of Lake Region, right?
Yes.
So is the proposed addition one-story or two-stories?
As I said, one-story addition.
So if it was... I'm just going to continue with a couple of technical things, too. On the entity disclosure form, although I understand it's an individual owner.
Correct.
It would still require... That form requires that even if it's not a business entity, that it still be disclosed, then who the individual owner is. In the initial instructions, disclose the names and addresses of all persons or entities owning any interest or controlling position. So I believe that that would still be required as part of completing the application.
We have no problem with that. Usually it's always been a corporation, but...
Yeah, right. Yeah, just point out, it's a little bit awkwardly worded, so I get that. I don't believe, as far as with the application... So I guess part of what I'm confused about is, on the accessory apartment application, it lists the total home floor area as in and around 1,200 feet. The accessory apartment floor area as in and around 1,440. Would you be able to clarify?
Which...
Sorry, on the accessory apartment permit application?
Yeah, that would be 750.
So is the existing floor area of the home, what's already built, is 1,200?
Correct.
So you're proposing to add another 750 to that?
Correct.
So, again, we run into an issue with the code when it comes to the minimum size of an accessory apartment. No, we're not. Sorry, that's not the issue. The issue is, if we take the 1,200 and the 750, that's 1,950. At most, you can do 30 percent of that. That's not going to give you 750 square feet for an accessory apartment. It's also marked on the permit application that we have a floor plan, but I don't believe we've received that at this point?
That is correct.
Okay.
We can provide one. You know, if the board would like to go ahead, we could provide a floor plan of what that accessory apartment would look like, or layout is.
Again, a code issue. So as part of the accessory apartment application, it requires an owner's affidavit detailing various issues that come up in the code that are required. One of them is that the owner currently occupies the dwelling as his principal domicile. So I believe Mr. Schoenfeld, who's the owner, lives on Garfield Drive, but the proposed property is not that. It's... Sorry, it's Valley View, thank you.
Yeah.
So I have the ownership information up here.
Yeah.
So it says Bernard Schoenfeld, 7 Lizensk Boulevard, Unit 302, Monroe, New York, 10950. So clearly, he's not living in the residence.
No, he would be... He owns it, he would be moving in.
So he'd be moving into the main unit?
Yes.
So it says, "Principal single-family detached dwelling wherein the accessory apartment is to be located must be occupied at the time of the application and at all times thereafter while the accessory apartment is established and maintained as the principal domicile of the record owner of title."
Yeah.
So is he living there now?
Uh, no.
So he doesn't meet that requirement?
Correct. But he could meet that requirement very quickly.
As part of the application, one of the things it asks for requires a copy of the deed. We did receive a closing statement for Mr. Schoenfeld purchasing the property, but it would be good to have that item as well. And in the EAF short form, item five? Is it five?
Yeah.
Item five. So is a proposed action permitted use under the zoning regulations and consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Both are marked yes, but currently, it doesn't fit within the... As proposed, it doesn't fit within the permitted uses under zoning or consistent with the comprehensive plan.
But if the accessory apartment is permitted under the zoning conditions?
But not as... But the way it's proposed, it's outside of the zoning for accessory apartments.
Correct.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Accessory apartments are permitted, but the proposal that we have is outside of that. So I'm not sure if that's consistent there. Those are the things I came up with.
So this says 6 Garfield Road. There's a different address. Where does Mr. Schoenfeld live? Application or the registration voter form six said 6...
6 Garfield.
Garfield, Unit 211, 6 Garfield. Is that the same as...
It's my understanding it's 6 Garfield.
Because this has the owner as living... Owner living at 7 Lizensk Boulevard, Unit 302, Monroe, New York. So I think we need some clarification and consistency. But at this time, he doesn't reside there. So Jeff, you already talked about the proposed house addition, that the EAF discusses that versus the accessory apartment. Ultimately, if this application is not meeting certain requirements, then this action will require other approvals, namely variances from the ZBA.
For area?
Well, let's go again through the sizing.
Sure.
And we're just saying also the percentage. It's not just the area, the percentage of the...
It's well...
Just trying to identify.
Right. So the minimum habitable floor area for an accessory apartment shall be 450 square feet, but in no case shall such accessory apartment exceed 30 percent of the gross floor area of the single-family detached dwelling in which it's located, or 750 square feet of gross floor area, whichever is less.
And I think we had, what, 750 and 1,950? And 750 is about one-third of like 21, 22...
585 is 30 percent of 1,900.
Why would be adding... Why are we using 1,900 if that's not an accessory yet? Wouldn't it be 30 percent of the original home? 1,200?
I was thinking if he finished...
Yeah.
Maybe if the whole finished work would meet the specification.
Yeah.
The whole finished work would be 1,950. And I think that's what you were saying, but it...
Yeah, I don't know that we can approve an accessory apartment where there's addition being put on. And the reason I say that is that the old accessory apartment regulations, what was essentially happening was people would get a building permit, build the home and the accessory apartment at the same time, although it said that the accessory apartment would be constructed after, you know, that it had to have been in existence already. So in that case, clearly, they were building in advance. Here, the house doesn't exist yet to be able to meet those standards.
The house exists, but not...
The actual... You're not complying at this point with the standards for the floor area because the house in its existing condition is small.
Correct.
So the whole point is that it's related to the existing dwelling, because if we have to process it now, given the size of accessory apartment, that is actually deemed a two-family dwelling. And if it's two-family, it's not allowed in that zone, then it's a use variance. So the whole thing we are trying to avoid with accessory apartment regulations is people actually building two families. So I think we have to look into this a bit more, how to process this application. But I don't know, Ashley, if you have any thoughts?
Sure, just... That issue...
It's okay.
So that issue obviously doesn't meet the code because they are seeking an extension, and the code says that it cannot extend in a manner that's called changing the roofline, the foundation, or the facade. So they wouldn't need to go for their variance or to ask the building inspector for some type of interpretation to see whether they would be permitted to do that.
Right.
There's also, as Jeff pointed out, quite a few things missing as far as the application paperwork. Another one was evidence of a lawful use of a single-family detached dwelling for 10 years. Now, the biggest issue, though, is that exceeding an extension. Without the extension, the accessory apartment would not meet the minimum square footage, so that really the building inspector and potentially variance would avoid this work and take any action.
Are there any other comments by the board members?
Oh, isn't there a 10-year requirement to have lived in the dwelling?
It said the dwelling has to have been lawfully constructed and used as a single-family detached dwelling for at least 10 years prior to the date that an application is made for the creation of the accessory apartment. So it had to have been used as a single-family dwelling and been in existence for 10 years. And there has to be evidence, like a C of O and other information that needs to be submitted. Are you on well, septic? What's the...
It is municipal sewer.
Okay.
It's well.
So what is... Who would be residing in the accessory apartment and who would reside in the primary?
In the accessory apartment would be in-law.
Would be a...
In-laws.
In-laws? Are we meeting the one-bedroom requirement? Do we have a floor plan or not?
Uh, no, we can provide a floor plan, but I can guarantee the floor area will have one bedroom.
Okay. Yeah, I think the fundamental, before we even get to that point, is that, you know, clearly the regulations say, "No exterior changes or expansion, which may alter its existing foundation. Existing roofline or existing facade may be made to the principal single-family detached dwelling, except for the installation of an entrance to serve the accessory apartment." Because the idea was to have existing homes have the opportunity for conversion of small apartments within the existing home, not to take a small home, make it larger, and then put the apartment in. So, you know, we clearly don't meet that requirement. What is your lot requirement or lot coverage right now? 25 percent?
Lot area is 15,000... The existing is 17,000 square feet, .392 acres. We have a 15.6 percent coverage. I think required or allowed is 25 percent.
Okay. So I don't know if we can... Did everybody have a chance to get out and see the actual site? Let me see if I can bring it up.
Yeah, I got out to the site.
I did, too. I took picture of deer. They were all over the place. I don't know if I can... This is Orange County. So for those of you who could not get out there, let's see if we can... It's not going to oblige. So it's this dwelling right here. The house itself, the parking, where does the parking occur in this little cutout over here?
It's an existing drive. And actually, I take that back. It's an existing drive.
It's right here? Is that where they park?
Yes.
This was a newer... When we went, when I looked, it was like a newer, almost like a ranch-style house.
Yeah.
And then this is a newer house as well. And then this is the proposed dwelling where the accessory apartment, the proposed accessory dwelling would be located.
Correct.
Valley View is one-way in. Just to give people some background. And then you said it is on sewer, but there's a well.
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know how far we want to go without... From my perspective, I think this needs variances. If this were to be processed today, because of the size of the home, the accessory apartment is actually larger than the existing home, so that would be treated as a two-family. They want to put an addition on. However, the zoning says, you're not supposed to change the foundation. So that is also contrary to the zoning law. So I think at this point, we couldn't approve it, and I don't know that we should go further. Without the ZBA, we don't send to the ZBA, or would the building inspector send them to the ZBA?
I think the best course for this application would be to go to the building inspector first, because there are also maybe an issue with the proposed parking in the front yard. I'm not sure whether that's permitted as well.
Okay.
So to ask the building inspector to look and make a determination as to both matters, the proposed extension or addition, and also the parking, and then apply for whatever variances are necessary.
So could we have you just write a letter summarizing at least a couple of issues that we saw here that doesn't meet the code? And then send it off to the building inspector, and then he has to make his own determinations.
Sure.
Mark, did you see anything in particular that popped out?
Actually, you folks did a wonderful job going over all the application inconsistencies and the elements that were contrary to the code. The only additional item that I'll point out is that although we have bulk information that's shown, because I wasn't sure what the final plan would be, I haven't reviewed the proposed bulk information, the required, I agree with what Dave had as a plan. Ultimately, the applicant will need to decide what application they want to pick before the zoning board, and I would suspect the zoning board needs to make sure that the bulk values are correct that they're considering, unless they send it over to me to check.
Okay. So we probably will need you to check it as they go through their application, if they decide... If you decide to pursue variances.
No, I understand completely.
And then I think we just need to make sure that the house itself and the dwelling ultimately, as you said, fits the bulk requirements for that zoning district if these additions are being put on. My other concern is that this is kind of close to the other home. Are they going... Is the addition going off to the right side of the house?
As you're looking at the screen right now, it's to the right.
It will be to the right. Okay. All right.
It looks like the existing home is a single-story, and the home to the left is two-story?
Not sure about the home to the left, but the home that we're talking about is a single-story ranch-style house.
And you'd be expanding out one story, you're not going up?
Correct.
So it'd be a single-story? Now, there's no vote for that one. It looks like ranch. I don't know if within the dormer, there's another floor or half-story, but it was like a long house that looked like it had been renovated.
One suggestion I do have, perhaps before it gets referred to the ZBA and possibly before the application goes back to the building inspector, is that all this contradictory information in the application is corrected so that not only will the planning board's record be correct and clear, but that Ben will in fact have a submission package that is consistent and represents exactly what's proposed. At this point, we all now understand, because Dave explained it, but we've got five different explanations in the various pieces of paperwork what's proposed, saying that needs to be all cleaned up so that when it's sent back to Ben, there's a corrected package.
I thought that we had a checklist of the criteria, didn't we?
It's on the other... Not on the accessory apartment. The opening form is on the big, the regular application.
What is on the regular?
There's a opening project form.
Okay.
That goes on the main application. This one had these checklists.
The attachments?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We may want to think about creating a checklist, yeah?
Yeah, we can have another one.
Just so that 30 percent, what's the size? You staying within existing?
It doesn't have the on affidavit form, like the individual...
Okay. Okay.
He has another form? Cool.
All right. Anything else? Dave, do you have any other questions?
No, we just covered all the bases. That's why he has even more forms. So I wanted to make sure we covered everything, at least touched every point. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. So that'll go off to the building inspector and may write, "require variances" if it's pursued.
You're going to send me a letter that I can give to Ben with the rest of the... Yeah. And I'll give it to him with the correct paperwork.
So our next item on the agenda is Foreign Objects Beer Company. But before we start, I just want to make a plug for the Town of Monroe Food Truck Festival that will be held this Saturday, June 12th, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at O and R, where the lakes are, O and R Lakes. It's going to be a great time, excellent fans, excellent food, so I hope whoever can attend, and it's supporting Honor Flight in the Hudson Valley. And I will do this again in between applications. All right.
Ms. Franzen?
Yes.
A third party has had discussions with the owner of Foreign Objects regarding potential business relationship between myself and the business, so for the purpose of avoiding any sense of impropriety or conflict, I'd like to recuse myself from this project.
Okay. Thank you. Ashley, do you have anything to say about the recusal or anything that needs to be formally done, or are we just acknowledge it?
That's perfectly appropriate, exactly how we acknowledge it. That's appropriate. You could take a seat aside for this application.
Thank you, John. All right. So why don't you start with an introduction as to what the applicant is proposing?
Sure.
And I'm going to navigate to where it is.
So Foreign Objects Beer is an entity that would be using this building for beer tasting and selling of beer. The intent is not... At the present time, the intent is not to use it as a bar or as a restaurant. Without question, there'll be no food preparation, but it would be for beer tasting. Taste that, taste this selection, taste that selection. I like that, and I have a certain quantity of it, and it would be sold at that time. We're not proposing any change to the footprint of the building, except for a privacy screen that we see off to the north side of the project or of the building. That privacy screen will house a sign about the establishment. In addition to that, in the back, we're proposing a walk-in cooler that would be on the east side of the building. And finally, we did the parking calculations, and while the existing parking lot is somewhat strict, it's not... The building inspector or building department had indicated that he would like clarity on that, so we propose... Are proposing a parking layout that includes one handicap space and access to the building, and then introduces three other spaces along the north side of the building. Yet, in total, we're really only proposing one additional space from what was originally intended. And that's the extent of the project at this time. I believe in this particular case, we did provide a floor plan of the project, of the layout inside, along with the front elevation. And the front elevation shows the upgrades that are proposed. Replace, repair the stucco, replace the awnings or install new awnings over the existing windows. And then to the left of the front elevation, you see the new privacy screen, which will be wood, along with a sign that would be lit from above. And that is the extent of the project.
Mark, have you had an opportunity to review this one?
I... I have no, yes.
Okay.
I think it's just a day of explaining what is proposed as far as the use. It should be memorialized on the plan as well, relative to the floor plan, which is going A1. It's really a plan that shows the interior partition walls. It doesn't identify any uses, seating, storage area, sales area, nothing else, although we normally don't want to have that as part of the records. Although we normally don't want to have that as part of the record stamp plans in the planning board so that they could be adjusted maybe with the building department could propose it. It still is important for the board to understand what in fact the use is that's proposed because currently, I understand is that last use was in fact a restaurant and bar potential. So that should be drilled down so that the planning board understands what they're approving. And as important, the code enforcement department understands what is proposed and the use group under which it falls in the code. The plans make some references that it's now a B occupancy, you know, using building code terms rather than planning board terms. And that it's a lesser impact than the previous occupancy. Well, I think that's up to the planning board to decide. So you need to say what zoning group, what bulk group, the use is as proposed. The planning board will compare that use to the last record use for approval from the site plan. And then the board will make a decision what information they need to determine, you know, is it a, does it create any other impacts, what they want to look at.
Well, I mean, we didn't come to that determination on our own. The building, the building code outlines that it's a lesser impact. I mean, a restaurant assembly use has a greater impact on a building and site than a business use. So...
What you're, what you're talking about is the state building code.
Correct.
I'm talking about the Town of Monroe Zoning Code. This board does not...
No, I, I agree.
Does not function as the enforcer of the state building code. That's the building department.
I agree. I just wanted to comment on your comment. If you didn't bring up the building code, I would not have brought it up.
The only reason I brought it up is because that's what your plans have on them.
Exactly.
So again, I think this, you've got to understand, Dave, this is the planning board. The application is for a site plan approval. What plans you need for the building department don't need to be incorporated into the planning board's application, but it needs to be a complete application that meets the planning board's needs to review under the zoning code, not the state building code.
Well, the zoning code is a neighborhood business. We do the zoning table on the lower left, which we'll write in the page. We're ready to address that.
In any case, that's my opinion.
Yeah. So I think we need to, and I don't know if Ben did indicate if this fits within the retail or the restaurant use. Because it sounds like it's retail, but it's also a tasting.
It's not a restaurant. Well, in which aspect, in the zoning code or the building?
I'm talking just purely our zoning.
Okay. Well, zoning code, it's a neighborhood business.
It's in the neighborhood business zoning district. Retail and restaurants allowed. So could you get more into, more into what's happening? They're going to be selling beer?
Correct. It's not a restaurant use. So it would be a retail use.
And, but you'd have tastings there?
Yes.
And would they offer food or other knickknacks to sell?
That's, I'm being told no.
Are there any regulations as far as bars and distances from houses or liquor license or not at all? I have no idea.
There are. And whether they would need a liquor license for the tastings, there's a whole different, there's varieties of that. I, in connection with that, as far as the use, there is a bar tavern use, I believe, permitted in this district. I don't know if that qualifies that. So that's something I think the building inspector needs to tell us where exactly this use fits in.
So it'd be good to have a narrative that just says X amount of floor area is going to be used for the, you know, display of beers. And then if it just happens that you have three or four seats for a tasting, you know, he can make the determination that you're fitting in retail as opposed to a restaurant or a tavern. So I think you just need more narrative as to what these guys want to do with the property.
Are you going to ask for an interpretation from the building department before we come back?
As far as which of these uses you fit within?
Correct.
Is this more retail or is this more tavern? In part because that might affect the parking standards.
Exactly. Well, I, I agree 100%, but that's why we classified it as a retail use. It's not intended to be a bar or a tavern.
Okay.
It's not to open every night. In fact, it won't be open every night. They're only thinking about a select, a number of nights to afternoon and evenings to open to the public so that they could taste the beer and buy beer. Would not be in the mold of a bar or tavern.
I will refer this, or speak with Ben.
Okay.
And ask the able to do the application and provide the board a memo.
Okay.
And the reason I bring it up is because again, we're in a situation where I believe the planning board's approval has to be fundamentally clear. I will share that I had another client reviewed a tasting room, which then got moved from one building to another building, then had food added, then turned into a restaurant, then started having live music. And the only salvation was is that the approval was very clear. And the applicant needed to come back for subsequent approvals because the limitations on the operation were very clear. It's a little difficult because the use is still the same group if you classify the tasting room as a bar. But you're turning it from a tasting room into sit-down, then adding food, then adding music. I'm not saying it's a bad, you know, we got to support local businesses. But again, you have to review the aspects that are particular to the site and the potential impacts for the scope that they're proposing. So the scope has to be very clear. Continuing with, if you want me to just finish up my observations? Right now, the parking on the site does exist, as Dave indicated, perpendicular to the building with the back out into, let's say, the shoulder of West Monbeach County Highway. So somewhere along the way, you'll need to decide if you want to refer this to Orange County DPW for any comment. Because you can see on the plan that the edge of the traveled way is not a heck of a long distance from the back of the bumpers. So we're adding some more parking spaces in. So I believe you have an obligation to send that to them. It's an existing condition, so they may say, fine, one additional space has no impact. But I do believe we have under 239F an obligation to send it to them.
It will have to go for GML as well.
Yeah. I don't know the source of the survey, Dave. So because of the tight quarter that it may be, we need to make sure that we have a clear understanding of all the site information. So that's important.
Jim Dillon did the survey.
Okay.
On the survey notes.
Is there a date with it?
May, May 15, 2006.
Okay. So I think that's what triggered my comment. It's just somewhere along the line, you need to make sure that the existing conditions in 2019 are the same as 2006. The three spaces up on the north end of the building that are being covered because they're really close, three aren't there now? They, you may want to slide them to the east a bit because the way it's designed right now, the parking spaces are pulling from Monbeach. Could pull in and either impact or trap, as it may be not allow the door to open in the third box. You may want to create some kind of separation between those three and the front row. You've got room to do it. The handicap sign or the handicap location, you may want to slide that down to the south because as it stands now, if the door location you show is correct, you'd be walking out the door and running into the handicap signs. So if you move them down, you could actually mount the signs to the...
To the building.
The building or against the building. So that would be a good adjustment. I'll get you some additional notes on the handicap spread in detail. The fencing that's proposed is really like a facade wall more or less, a screening wall. And it's got some lighting on it. We just need to have a standard note add about lighting because again, if the fixtures create glare, you've got a county highway, edge of traveled way, 25 feet off the lights. So we got to be careful with that.
Do lighting, do lighting notes in the zoning code?
Uh, no, I'll give you those.
Okay.
The walk-in cooler, is that access from, you've got a door from the outside, but is it access from the inside as well?
No.
Okay. Because there's no sidewalk, no way to, shown way to walk around the building unless it's, I don't know if that's paved or grass or what it is.
Uh, we can note that, sure.
So just deal with that. Is the front, you kind of depict a hard line for the front of the parking spaces. Is that just a depicted parking line or is there a sidewalk? Asphalt right through the building?
I, I'm almost sure there's a sidewalk.
Okay. Just, if you could just clarify that.
Sure.
Other than that, again, it's a reuse of an existing building, not a lot of proposed exterior changes. The main concern I have is that the board fully documents what they're approving.
So getting back to the county highway department, if this is in front of them, will they allow the cars to back out or not customarily? I know this is an old use and that's the way it's been, but moving forward?
I, I don't have an answer to that. Not that they have objection to what exists. But if, if what Dave's saying is that they're only adding one additional space along County Highway 91, there's a chance they may say, add the additional space over to the three on the, on the Lakeview Drive side. Don't add anymore to the county side, and we'll let you continue to do what you've done for the last 30 years. But again, we need to have that feedback.
Yeah. My reaction would be that, you know, I'd like to try to actually keep the cars away from the houses that are over here. Although I don't know, again, I think if you have hours of operation and we understand what the parameters will be, I think I'd be less concerned about potential people coming out, having tasted, then hanging out in the parking lot. I doubt they'll do that, but I just want to understand, again, the nature of the operation.
I forgot to tell you, our next meeting's going to be there.
Oh, is it? Or are you bringing the tastings here? I personally like Omagong. The other thing, is there an opportunity to, you know, this is one big parking lot and it just goes and flows into the road, flows into the county road. Is there a way to get actually some kind of landscape corner in here?
If you look at the plan, it's literally, the only way out of the parking spaces is the back on County Highway.
Right.
So it's, it would, it would never be approved as a new application in this way.
All right. So you don't think maybe here in the corner, we could put something in there just to green it up a little?
Yeah. What if, but then you can't see maybe as much trying to back out onto the road? I mean...
Yeah. I mean, it would have to be grass and low, whatever it is.
Oh, all right.
It couldn't impede site distances.
It is a corner lot also, so you have those corner restrictions as to what you can put in there.
What you can do for site distances. The other thing, I mean, it's in the water supply overlay district, so the maximum pervious is supposed to be, I think, 15%. So that was why I was thinking just maybe we could achieve some greening up, perhaps, something. Give it some thought. And just to remind the board, we have architectural review authority over the application. So we should look at the building and see if there's any enhancements or improvements that would be appropriate. And then, Mark, when I look at the survey, it looks like is the front lot line going into the road?
It is. It's an old B line that goes into the county right of way. So they would have a lot of use. The highway and the joint drainage areas. But the B line doesn't represent what they have as usable space.
So I want to see whether the measuring of the front yard is measured from the proper place or if we say, you know, where it is in the middle of the road, you have to do it 25 foot back. I don't know what our regs say.
I'll look in the code and see if they have a provision that indicates when the deed goes into the roadway where it's measured.
I mean, it's pre-existing, so, but, but just to get the numbers right. And then in other communities, we typically still require some kind of note that says that you're allowed to use the highway for highway purposes, just some note acknowledging that, that highway exists. Not that we're asking for a deeded right of way, but just a note or an easement that says, you know, this portion is used for highway purposes or something to that effect. We've seen, have, do you know what I'm referring to?
No, I, I understand. And I wouldn't be surprised if the county came back and if they have the opportunity, they can offer dedication to get at least to their, to their white shoulder line.
Okay.
Because it's really not, it's not of any benefit to this lot. It's more a liability.
Right.
So they really don't have full use of it. They may have a deed that goes out into the highway. That's about it.
Right. And there is a liability because essentially what's happening on that, I guess, highway is on their property. If something occurs there, maybe? I don't know.
Can always get sued if you are.
Okay. Ashley, do you have any?
I think everyone pretty much touched on my comments, just a couple items to clarify. On the plan, the front yard, it's actually labeled rear yard. It has the proper 40-foot setback, but it's, it's just, it needs to be labeled correctly. And also the zoning table should be, it should reflect the watershed 15% prohibited restriction that Bonnie had mentioned.
Yep.
And also there is, because it's a corner lot, the side that unlocks the Lakeview Drive that also is supposed to comply with the front yard setbacks. So although it's pre-existing, I believe you indicated pre-existing, non-conforming, just so that the zoning table reflects what's the requirements.
So they're both, if they're both front yards and it's normally 40 feet, then the other side has to show 40 feet off of Lakeview?
Decided to butt in Lakeview.
Okay.
What is it, 40 feet?
Well, you're showing 40 feet on...
It has to meet the same as the front yard.
Right. Right. And you have Ry, which I guess is rear yard as opposed to FY for front yard. Board members, comments?
I'm just wondering, if you're proposing site plan modification, doesn't the site have to be brought up to current standards? Which would, we would have to review the current cuts on Lakeview Drive?
I'm not aware of the requirement to bring it up, but I'll segue on that.
I think we have to look at what the, the section on non-conforming and non-compliant uses states because it either allows it to continue. But if it doesn't have that language, then you may need variances, even if it's, if they've never gotten variances before. I don't know. We have to look at that.
And that goes back to Ben's interpretation of the use because if it's, if it's a, what's called an evening drinking establishment now and Ben determines that in fact the tasting room constitutes a drinking establishment, they may not be changing the use at all.
The use at all, correct. Yep.
And that's kind of the jury, the jury is out on that one as well.
Right. So the clients there, do they have other places?
Yes.
Okay. Where are their businesses?
You know, I'm not sure. I mean, I do, I do know they have other places, I think even in other states.
Okay.
I just haven't expanded on that conversation that much.
Yeah. I'd be curious whether they're doing business and sort of what their model is. Anybody else have comments, questions at this point? No?
You know, just so you know, if you go to the site, there is work going on because a building permit was issued for interior work.
For interior work. I saw some, I don't know if it was scaffolding or maybe for exterior awnings for the window.
Yes.
So they really should be careful about doing the exterior again because we have architectural review authority. So I would just let them know that. Okay. All right. So at this point, I think we need to get some additional information. Would it be beneficial to send it off to County Highway at this point, Mark? Just to get some preliminary comments from them?
Maybe after Dave does his first round of revisions.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
Good question. Now, will you contact the building department for the interpretation or you need us? I, I don't want to...
Mark will take care of it.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Take care of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I left a message. Okay.
Yeah, so the whole big thing.
Okay. All right.
No idea.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is DG Management. Good evening. Why don't you just state your name for the record?
Don't forget the food truck plug in between.
Oh, yes, again. Town of Monroe Food Truck Festival.
This Saturday.
June 12th. June 12th, this Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Fifteen, I think you're reading it through the paper.
Oh, fifteen, sorry, I am reading it backwards. Great time, food, bands, been there? Oh, and? How will you get to the Town of Monroe Food Truck Festival? Easy. I'm reading backwards. Park at the commuter parking lot on O-N-R Road, dial a bus, we'll drop you off at the festival. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for reminder. Alright, now we're on.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. John Keenan from Leiken Teleengineering, engineering, yep, good. Back again with a project we talked about at length at the last planning board meeting. DG Realty Management is a proposed subdivision of a nine-and-a-half acre parcel located, we'll say off of Orico Terrace is where it has its frontage. It extends from Orico Terrace back to Scuny Monk Road. We've been here for several months, going, going through iterations of the conventional layout plan. And at the last meeting, we talked in depth about grading and accessibility to the houses, a little more detail on the road grades, and specifically lot number ten in the corner. I guess making it a little more builder-friendly per se. So, what we did was, we submitted two plans, and the first plan is really the plan that we started with. It's labeled, mislabeled alternate, but that was the original plan for lot number ten. It had the switchback driveway going up and around. We've gone through that grading, we've softened that grading in some areas, just to prove that, again, it's a buildable lot. We've also went through, we've redone the road grading, and we've graded out pretty much the entire subdivision for all the lots, proving that we can get driveway access from the road to the house and that the grading overall, and the overall site, you know, can work. So, I think at this point.
This is, you have two, there's the alternates.
I'll get to why I did the second one.
Okay, so this is the, we're talking about the alternate?
Yes.
Not the alternate sketch yet?
It should say, the one, the original one should say.
There's sketch?
Alternate sketch, conventional subdivision plan, lot ten. That should be the title.
Will he read me?
Okay.
The alternate was really the original.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, this is the original?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we did, then we did a second plan on board, that's the conventional plan, that had a different layout for lot number ten that uses the frontage on Orico Terrace for the public road frontage aspect of it, but provides driveway access through the proposed cul-de-sac. Just again, to prove that the lot is buildable in any way. The only caveat was, couldn't find anything specifically in the code that discussed flag lots and whether or not this configuration would be considered a flag lot because we had frontage on Orico Terrace. So, that's why we're kind of stuck with both layouts.
I know we don't allow flag lots because we don't like, we don't allow a home behind another home. So, I don't know that it matters about the frontage, because here you have a home behind a home on this particular layout.
The one with the flag lot with the driveway?
Correct. The one that, the new one, not the alternate.
So.
And then, actually, I want to ask about. Lot twelve, is that meeting all, are there depth requirements or? It's an odd-shaped lot.
It's an odd-shaped lot, it meets the, it's with the front yard setback.
We're in SR-10?
Yes. It meets the net lot area.
So, minimum lot width seventy-five, front yard twenty-five, rear yard thirty-five, coverage, okay. Okay.
Just to remind us, these lots, this, all these drawings are just to show how many lots can fit.
Correct.
It's, none of these are the plans.
Ultimately, what I was hoping to accomplish tonight would be the consensus of the number of lots.
Okay. I know, I just, it was two months ago, I think, that I was last talking about it. I wasn't here last time, so.
So, I think the.
Just to get caught.
At the last meeting, we had, we had a list, and it was pretty much to grade subdivision out, to prove access to the lots, and to basically soften up lot ten.
So, are we looking at the alternate, the plan that says lot ten alternate, or?
That's the original. Look at that one, yes.
Okay. And that has the driveway on lot?
That has the driveway on lot ten coming from Orico Terrace.
Right, with the S-turn, so it's got four, three or four turns.
Yes.
And the heavy lines, those represent four-foot-high walls?
Those are retaining walls, yes.
Yep.
Is that driveway on lot ten, is that two car widths wide?
That driveway is the standard town road driver, so it's kind of letting it go to the right. We do have a pull-up area in the middle as you come up after the second down. It's a, it's a very similar driveway to the driveway listed on Jane Court, actually.
Yeah.
That has multiple switchbacks with a retaining wall.
Mark, do we have cul-de-sac length? Did we meet the cul-de-sac length on these?
Right, you're talking about the middle driveway.
Now, what is it showing again?
It's waivable.
This is our property.
But we would have to determine we would waive it.
This is where, this is Jane Court.
It's coming off of Village Road.
Which is now clear in the code that you have to hold a bus in town. I'm sure of that.
I don't know, I don't know that it matters if it's in the village or the town. I think it's just the length of that road is to be X. And, so it's not meeting it, so we would have, okay. Do you recall?
We talked about this as well at length at the last meeting, the cul-de-sac length. The cul-de-sac length in the town, in this portion of the town, would be five hundred feet. But if you take it from the total from Scuny Monk, it is greater than, I believe, eight hundred? No, five hundred is the limit. We'd be closer to eight hundred.
Yeah.
And then we went, we went through various discussions about how there's no other access to this parcel.
Right.
From any other direction.
Right.
Asked for that waiver if we were to build this conventional plan.
So, why would we grant the waiver?
The waiver wouldn't be considered by this board. That comes from the highway superintendent.
Oh, okay.
For what, the cul-de-sac?
Any of the town road specification provisions are only waivable by the highway superintendent.
So, it's in the road specs, not the subdivision?
The road specs, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's not our call.
No, but. For road, for various items in the past. There'd be no other way to get to the parcel without a road greater than five hundred feet.
Um. What is the length up to the property line?
The length that's in the town?
Yeah.
In the village?
In the village?
Before you hit the town?
I think it's, wait a second.
Because the road is, the cul-de-sac length is X. It doesn't really say whether it's a village or town. And the whole idea is not to have an overly long cul-de-sac road.
It's about four hundred feet to our property line.
Four hundred, so you could bring in another hundred?
Technically, yes.
If it's, if it's five hundred.
One of the things we talked about the last time about the restrictions on this lot geometrically and the access points, was the discussion about that this property was landlocked and this owner was boxed in.
Yes.
And I think the history and context of how this situation was created might be relevant in terms of was this property purchased as is? And what did the owner know about the property when that was purchased? Or was this property owned at the same time it's the neighboring lot? And the owner subdivided it this way so that they could develop one side and left this portion for future use?
I can, I can tell you that we went through this and the Jane Court subdivision included this lot. And when they subdivided those lots in the area off of Jane Court, they effectively created this lot and sent its access out to Scuny Monk. That was all part of that, that subdivision plan that did that. And when it did that, it basically took, it takes about four hundred and seventy-five feet to get from Scuny Monk Road to the property boundary through that access that was developed in that subdivision plan. So, effectively.
Alright, so the issue here was that we had had the other subdivision next to this and we had two roads that were immediately, no, I'm just trying to, the flavor of it.
Regardless of the other subdivision, if I were to use the access easement that was there, the other subdivision exists, it would take me five hundred feet just to get to the property.
To, oh, to get to beyond the Jacobowitz property?
Correct.
Okay. So, either way, the cul-de-sac, there was a problem?
Yes.
Meeting the length.
Yes. So, by going through the village, actually, it actually reduces the length to get into the property.
Okay. So, you may have, you may get further with the five hundred going in this direction as opposed to having gone down the easement?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a fundamental question here, whether the highway superintendent is going to allow a cul-de-sac that's longer. Would, even if this is, you know, the conventional? Because if you wouldn't grant the waiver, then all of these lots that are coming off of that are, are in question. Then we're talking about very large lots.
Well, you're, you're talking one lot.
Uh, you could probably get a couple, three or four.
I think what happened in the past that was approved through subdivision has detrimentally hurt this lot and access. And the only way to successfully access it would be to waive the cul-de-sac length.
What, so, repeat that, what has happened to detriment, what detrimentally affected this?
That subdivision that was approved on Jane Court cut the access off from this parcel. It was all one parcel that had access.
What's Jane Court, yeah, I'm getting confused.
Jane Court is north of this parcel.
Okay, let me uphold it up.
Yeah, if you look at, well, like north of.
It's north of, where on the map do you see Simmons?
Like eight, seven, six, five, right, and Simmons is, Simmons is.
Are you talking about this here?
Yeah, yeah, that's Jane Court.
Okay.
And then the, the property in the middle with the long driveway, which is Simmons.
This is us.
Yeah.
Right.
So, at one point in time, this was all one lot that went up to Jane Court.
Okay, including this one?
Including all these three.
Okay.
Two thousand two, two thousand three, there was a subdivision that made four lots. Made these three lots off of Jane Court and put this lot here. And then, in doing so, this parcel, knowing that it could never get access from Orico Terrace, planning board in the subdivision at the time put the access out to Scuny Monk Road through that access easement that I show on this map.
Well, that access easement is a driveway easement, correct?
No, it's a fifty-foot wide.
I think we need that map.
Access easement. You have that map. I, I gave it to.
You did give us two?
Gave it to Mike Donnelly, who already ruled that he agreed.
I think we need to look at it. Only because we, this is, I'm.
This has been months.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen it, and I think we need to see what the map notes are on it and what the intent was. And.
So, they.
We don't have Mike anymore, so we can't, you know, go to him.
The parent lot subdivided this property, knowing that they only would have limited access?
I don't know what they, I don't know what they knew in two thousand three. All I know is that this board approved that access there. And now you're telling me that.
Yeah, I'm, I.
They may not give you the.
No, I'm just trying, I'm trying to get the background now, because I don't think I fully understood that. So, explain again what Mike Donnelly indicated to you?
I looked at the subdivision map and determined that that fifty-foot wide access easement was enough for public access easement. That's what it was intended for.
Okay.
And that's why lot one meets the definition of having public frontage through that fifty-foot wide easement.
I think what Mike had determined was that there was a filed map with a road giving access to the lot, and that is why a two-eighty-eight variance wouldn't be required.
Right, which is different than meeting whatever's needed to get a subdivision into the property, because there's other standards that apply, including something like the five-hundred-foot limitation on the cul-de-sac length.
And not only that, but if that, I mean, we grant, we, if the planning board presumably provided that area for access to the lot, it didn't necessarily bind itself to allowing a cul-de-sac that would exceed its five-hundred-foot limitations. I mean, I don't think the planning board would be holding to that.
They'd not be holding to that, but how, why would you create a nine-and-a-half acre lot and give it access that it only gets to exactly the property line?
But, I don't know.
Were you the subdivision? Did you represent them?
No.
So, you don't, you don't have the background then?
I just have the map.
Okay.
I don't really have the background.
Who, who put the, do you remember who put the map together?
Zimmerman.
Okay. And how long ago was that?
Two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand four, somewhere in that range. But I just, I just feel like we're going back over items that we've gone over now for several months.
Well, I think the first item that we waited to get addressed was the fact that the applicant pursued getting a right to go over this new road so that he could get access through there.
He did.
So, that wasn't necessarily our delay. That was just a way to get better access into the property rather than through the easement.
I didn't, I didn't say that that was your delay or something. We talked at length at the last meeting about cul-de-sac length. We talked at length about the different access points.
You were on last, last work, I wasn't here, so I apologize.
Yeah, but I recall that being, you know, clarified about the context of how this lot was created. I mean, I agree, it's a large lot, but, you know, I don't know what the context of this purchase was and how this land was laid out and set aside for future development. And I don't think we teased that out at all, and that's my opinion.
No, but.
So, I'm asking that question.
On the prior subdivision map, it probably just said not for residential subdivision at this time. And it's probably just left as a vacant lot.
It's your seventy-seven point.
But if the waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac doesn't apply to this board, then I have to get the determination from the highway superintendent.
So, well, yeah, because we can't, we can't make that determination anyway. There, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five is the subdivision that you're referring to, right? That this was attached to?
Yes.
Because that says the X-Dean, is that X-Dean subdivision map? It says two-thirty dash oh-three.
No, you're gonna get the.
And then this says X-Dean.
Two-thirty.
And this is Kronk.
No, we're gonna do, I think it's Maple Tree Associates.
And then Maple Tree. So, are these in fact related? Oh, so you think this is all Maple Tree?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I might have the map in my pocket.
Yeah, that'd be great. Have you seen that map, Mark?
No.
Yeah, I think. I, it would be great in the future, send two copies, you know, because I guess that ended up with Mike and no one else. And so, we have it here. Why don't you show it to Mark first?
What, what is that map?
That's the, that's the subdivision creating this large lot. Okay.
Before we go any further, I just want to make one correction of what I indicated.
Okay.
With road specs, the cul-de-sac length of final of Orico Terrace. The cul-de-sac length for town roads was eliminated from the road specs because it conflicted with the subdivision regs.
Oh, and it's in the subdivision regs?
Subdivision reg, the update, it's actually an A-sixty-five-twenty-one, F-one, which is the subdivision reg, which has the five-hundred-foot.
So, that's our then?
So, you're back here.
Yeah, that's our waiver then?
Right here.
I wanted to just fill that up for. The fifty-foot easement for ingress and egress from Scuny Monk is for lot four, which was the entire parcel.
Okay.
Supposed to be a number eleven subdivision. Yeah, so it just adds to the obligations to our joint utility utilities.
Okay.
It doesn't restrict it as to a particular limited development, just has access to lot four, he said. So, that was a reservation for the remainder parcel, as they call it, with the fifty-foot wide easement realities. As to what, she had another town right-of-way off of Jane that was being abandoned as part of this subdivision settlement. I mean, obviously, any development subject with land was brutal. It appears that the intent was that the access would be prohibited off of Jane and required off of Scuny Monk.
So, prohibited off of Jane?
Because they eliminated.
Right, the ability to, probably to get to Orico Terrace, because they didn't want them coming out of that intersection.
Yeah, they were, they were running parallel to Orico off of Jane.
Yeah.
That was apparently an old town road right-of-way from a filed map. That was apparently an old town road right-of-way from a filed map, grabbed in the past, and then it was abandoned as part of this.
That little cul-de-sac looking,
No, it's just a, it's what you put script from Jane Court.
Oh, I'm looking, I was looking over here, what's this?
It would have been right here.
Well, so it went this way?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, parallel with Orico.
That's kinda odd.
Yeah.
Because that's like double frontage lots, right?
Yeah.
If these are already existing?
They were on each side of the, or along.
Yeah, nice.
But that was abandoned in case, and the access was reconfigured off of Scunnamunk.
So our, whether we're looking at this one,
Could you pan up a little, where's Scunnamunk?
Uh, let's see, Scunnamunk is in this direction.
You see the dotted line to the right?
Right here.
Yeah, that's Scunnamunk.
Right, so for them to get access, it's over which property?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, so they have to come this way through eighty-three to get to Scunnamunk. But instead, they now received, you're coming in through, right, and here they subdivided, right?
Correct.
Okay, which helped with the cul-de-sac length. So, so right now,
And it helped with the other subdivision.
So right now, to be able to achieve this, you're not meeting the cul-de-sac requirement, and with the cluster,
Oh, you'd be asking for a waiver, I guess.
And then, well, so, but it's up to the board to decide whether that would have been a conventional plan. And then regardless, with the proposed, that's 800 feet, so that's still another waiver. I think the, I think you had 800,
Eight hundred total from the, from Scunnamunk
Right.
Through the village into the town.
Okay.
And that's true.
The actual length in the town is 500.
Um, so,
And for the cluster layout, it would also be 800.
No, and less, the cul-de-sac was, was getting a little less, I think we were,
It's not as long.
Correct.
Right.
You still needed the waiver.
I think it's still, I think in total, it's 800. Including the piece that's in the village.
Yes.
Right, and this one's longer than 800.
You do have it labeled as 800 on the,
Is this something that we can,
On the cluster, yeah.
Well,
Approve pending the highway department?
Well, I was gonna ask,
Yeah, no, 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 not the whole,
Because, Mark,
Not in the property.
Yeah.
Even though we have waiver ability, doesn't it make sense for us to still ask the highway superintendent?
Looks like it's probably about that.
Whether he would want to maintain that cul-de-sac length?
It would be valuable if he would know that if he saw any problematic issues with the forward road being eight, nine hundred foot longer, work long versus 500, yes.
Okay.
Thirty's that could be asked for some more.
Okay.
Could you repeat what the distance from Scunnamunk Road to get to the town line is?
The distance from Scunnamunk Road to the town line is four, and then in the conventional plan, the length of cul-de-sac then is an additional five in the town. So it's nine hundred total. And then in the cluster layout, I believe it reduces down to eight hundred.
So what I would like to know is how many lots could you get if you had to hear to the 500?
Sure.
On, when we're looking at that map,
Does it, like,
I'm just, I'm a little upset because we've, we've been here for a long time now, and now we're turning back to this, to this point, which is, I just think it's unfair with all the work that was put in.
Well, all this work is still, all this,
I would have done all of this work for, I can do that.
I don't recall the, I don't recall the waiver discussion, so I apologize, and I don't know if I was here for it. But I would like to know how many lots you think you could get with the 500?
Probably, I'll say probably four.
Okay, and then how many are you asking for with the waivers with that conventional that doesn't meet the cul-de-sac length?
Would be sixteen.
Four to sixteen, okay. So, my, okay, does any, do the board members have any other comments, questions?
The map that's up there now, when we look at 93, 94, and 95, are those single lots?
Yes.
Yeah.
So then when we look at 96, I mean, there's a lot of property on 90, 93, 94, and 95, and you're trying to cram in 16 on, and we'll not, I mean,
The zoning, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, SR 10, 10,000 square feet.
Well, can we dive into the grading, proposed grading plan then?
Sure.
So on the road, proposed road that shows a 5%, you have up to about 15-foot cut on that road, just to put that road in. Do you have, and so one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was reasonableness to, to develop the property. And, um, you know, even if the town, uh, even if the planning board could get past the, uh, the modification, a huge modification in my opinion, to the landscape, which would require a lot of rock, uh, removal. You know, the, the issue is reasonableness of, of development, and I'm just wondering at what point does it become cost prohibitive? And if you did some number crunching to arrive at how much rock removal would be required to put in a 15-foot cut on a 50-foot right-of-way? Uh, and that's not to mention each individual lot which has proposed houses with rock cuts.
We, again, we're back to that same conversation of build, build abilities or realistic to build, or someone can build it. And the, the cut that you are in question is, it's a small knob right in the center, um, probably near Lot, um, like Lot 6, there's a small knob in the center of that property, so that's why you get that jump in grade. It lasts probably for less than 100 feet, and you drop, uh, 2, 4, 6, about, you know, six or eight feet right off the bat, so you, you come down from 15 feet, you're back to, you know, maybe a eight or nine-foot cut there.
So it looks like you have about average for your total different distance, about a seven-foot cut.
Yeah, and that's to match the grade of the proposed village street coming in.
And how much, um, of that seven-foot cut? How, how would you, if it was rock, how, how would the applicant remove that rock?
Uh, depends, uh, what type of rock it is, if it's shale, and he's only going maybe an average of, of six, seven feet, he may, he may hammer it out, or if it's not shale, he, he may blast it.
So if he had to hammer out 100, uh, 350-feet road, seven-foot deep, how would the applicant attenuate noise to the neighborhood to install that road?
This one's just, this is just to see how many lots he can fit in there, he's not even gonna build that driveway, right? I mean, that's,
Well, yeah, but the discussion was about the reasonableness of the conventional plan, and if it could really be built out to establish the lot number for the cluster. So I, I, and what I'm getting at is I think the proposed 16, 17, 16 lots is not reasonable. And, you know, I'm trying to vet out, you know, concerns I have about the change in the landscape, and one of the discussions for reasonableness is how, how would the applicant really build this out as proposed on the conventional plan?
I, I think he would build it like, all the many subdivisions that I've done with large cuts and fills, they, they, they build it, they blast, they grade, they cut and fill. You know, he would probably blast a rock, he'd crush the rock, use it for the base of the road, use it for, I mean, his foundations and his footings. So it's just not simply, oh, we, we had to blast it, get it out of here, they, they would recycle, probably reuse it on all the lots for the road base and the houses and that, and that such.
Any other, uh, comments, board members?
I mean, I tend to agree that that configuration driveway would, uh, require blasting. Is, is the distance between where the driveway comes out near Orico Terrace and that little stretch right at the beginning, is that too close to the neighboring house to be able to blast? Or, or is it not? That, that's, that's really, you know, from a feasibility standpoint.
I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a blaster.
Okay.
So I, I, I couldn't, I, I think what they do though is,
There are certain parts of a feasibility study.
If you're proposing to blast, you have to get a permit to blast, the building department. I know there's strict regulations for monitoring, um, the blasting, and depending on your distance to the nearest structure, how much blasting you can do at one, at one point in time to alleviate those concerns, but I don't know the specifics.
And I don't know the answer to that either, I just didn't know if there's like a minimum distance or that you have to be away from existing structures. Okay.
Well, I think there, there, I, in my opinion, I think, you know, I'd be concerned about the cost just to get the road in, and that would add a considerable cost to development of that property for this number of houses. And that's not to mention also the additional cost that would be required so that you can build driveways and install, and, and construct houses to meet that road design. So, you know, with the limited information that we have on the plan, I do appreciate the effort that you put into the grading plan. You know, my take is, you know, uh, that it may not be reasonable to support this, so that coupled with the, uh, the waiver required for the cul-de-sac, uh, I'm just not feeling good about this number.
Is there, is there, sorry, I'm sorry, is, um, are the economics of it part of the feasibility thing? I don't know if we have a checklist or something that shows what we could,
There's really no checklist, and this is really, it goes a lot with the planning board's judgment, and what could be approved if this were the plan that's before you, this conventional plan, what could be approved and, and what would be approved. Obviously, if something was so out there where you needed to build a bridge in order to get access to, to a lot, that would be something to consider, but perhaps Mark could weigh in a little bit on the grading and his thoughts on, on the cuts that are involved, and whether that's something that's,
Because I was hearing that they were expensive, and so that makes it seem not feasible, but I've also worked with someone who maybe didn't, uh, have as much interest in the finances of it, wanted something that rode the twist in a certain way, and whatever it costs, it costs, and and feasible, if you meant feasible like you can make it, you can, I mean, you can send a train through the Rocky Mountains or whatever, I mean, I think you can make it, but, uh, it would be, yeah, it would be cost prohibitive for the normal house you'd put there. I, I, I understand that point, and I'm just wondering if we should be considering that point or not as, as, as a planning board, I guess. I don't know, I, does that make any sense, or is that a good question, or am I trying to dump planning board work off on our engineer?
All valid comments.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Mark.
The comment is, you clearly understood, you can build anything if you want to spend enough money.
Okay.
That's the first comment. As far as what aspects are considered as part of the yield plan, Mike Donnelly opined a bit on it. Ashley's given us some further guidance. I'll leave that to the attorneys to say what you shouldn't, shouldn't consider. Yes, there are some very steep cuts, deep cuts for maybe 200 feet on the plan. Have I seen more earthwork on subdivisions? Absolutely. As far as the rock goes, we don't have enough information, and I don't know that the board, uh, any board requires borings to find out what kind of rock is, is in the site, you know, it could be ripable shale, and they could run right through this. And it may not have to be blasted at all, or it could be, as, as John indicated, something can be drilled and have some hard areas shot. So, there's, I don't think we'll ever have that information. I think the answer us come down to is, uh, for what the proper review of a, of a yield plan is, should you or should you not consider the cost, and I don't have that answer, but I will say that, uh, everything Anthony said is absolutely true. You've got a bit of road cut, you've got grading for the lots. I had one very similar that I thought they were crazy for doing, and what's even crazier is they didn't do a cluster, they built the difficult construction. I guess the market drives what they want to spend to, to develop a subdivision. So, I'll, I'll stay out of the issue of what your scope of review is, I'll leave that to the attorneys, but it, it's a, a bit of a tough site, and what they've shown is something that can be accomplished. If they build the conventional plan, it'll be a lot more expensive and more destructive to the land than the cluster, which is probably why they're here asking for a cluster.
Thanks.
Bonnie? Yes, I'm sorry, just, if I may. You know, I mean, I think John makes a very good point about they've sort of been left with a difficult situation, and they have to deal in the realities of what's there now, part of which is, although the easement into the property is off of Scunnamunk through the Xsteen property, we're working on a proposal next door at the D'Ambrosio property of another six families. If the driveway came through the existing easement, it's gonna let out very near where those six homes are gonna be coming out to, no matter what's built out here. Both geographically in this, in this space, and with the, with the way traffic flows through here, the proposal to come out where they do on this village street is just, it's the most sensible one for this property in this area of the town and village. You know, further out on Scunnamunk, the visibility gets worse, um, the, the traffic is a little bit slower over here as people are approaching the light. For all those reasons, I, I mean, you know, down, to come down to Orico Terrace would be quite difficult and, and do all this, and, and where the easement is to Scunnamunk is not great either. So they, I think they're kinda coming to us, putting what is the best possibility for this area forward. That, that, that I just feel.
I think, from my perspective, I think the location of where you're coming in for access is superior to going off from Scunnamunk. I mean, you created that access. Um, in my mind, it's coming down to, you know, again, what would have been allowed conventionally. Conventionally, without a waiver, would be a 500-foot cul-de-sac. This would be longer than that, and I think part of the reason why maybe I didn't pick up on it myself is that when you show the cul-de-sac, um, on the conventional, you have, it measured 500 feet from the village lot line. So I think it would be good, because I personally wouldn't want to waive that requirement without input from the highway superintendent, because ultimately, this is a town road, and he has to maintain it.
That's a question I could, legally, I don't know, it's only 500 feet in the town, and the other portion would be village street.
Right, but I think it's,
I don't know if that makes a difference.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think that the subdivision regulations say from which point it's measured. I think it just says, you know, not to be off of a cul-de-sac that's longer than 500 feet. You know, we wouldn't want something that's 1,000 feet, and then we're extending it another 500 feet. I mean, the whole, the whole point of the length is about safety. So, I think, I think that it'd be good to send it to John. Either John's going to say, I could live with, you know, X, because this is the length of most of our subdivisions, or, you know, I can, I can only support 500, I can support 800, and then compare what you could have gotten with the 500, and what you can get up to whatever, you know, we would take in the input of the highway superintendent and what that length would be, and then come up with a reasonable yield based on the cul-de-sac length. For me, that's, that's my, I think,
They did offer to go to the highway superintendent at the last meeting.
I think, well, I'm gonna have Mark, Mark and I will reach out to him.
Because I think the board didn't want to put him in that position.
I, that was my opinion, and I still maintain that.
Yeah.
I think that's a planning board decision.
I speak with him on a regular basis on a variety of issues, so.
Yeah, we're, we're not, right, and we're not trying to approach him and say, hey, John, what's the length, so we can determine yield. I think we just want to find out from a,
See his concerns.
Right, from an emergency purposes, from a safety purposes, from a practices of Monroe, you know, maybe there's been another situation where they did an interpretation of what the length of the cul-de-sac would be. You know, I don't know if we have any other situation where this happens between a village and town, or town and town.
I'll, I'll speak with him, he's in a, a bit of a unique situation in the fact that he's not only the town highway superintendent, but the chief of fire department. So we'll look at it from both aspects.
Right.
I'll, I'll reach out to him.
And so I don't feel that we're, I personally don't feel that we're putting him on the spot, because he's the highway superintendent, and he ultimately maintains the roads.
Was discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah. I feel like once I have that, a lot of the, you know, if you're showing the bulk requirements, um, you know, can people blast out properties to accommodate lots? Yes.
Well, the other thing is I can adjust these road grades, we just,
Right.
We just put together a generic layout.
Right.
I could raise 5% to,
Right.
8% and probably cut the cut in half.
Right, from, from my perspective, unless you had a big wetland that you were, you were gonna propose to fill three acres, I would say that's undoable, you know, even if you got a permit, we just wouldn't approve that. So,
And this plan was even more conservative, um, by pretty much restricting the development to only the usable portion of the property, really.
So, yeah, and so then I think the only lot, from my perspective at this point, was the flag lot, that,
Yeah, we just did an alternative design.
To show it, so.
Just to show it either way, and it, it works either way.
So I feel that if we get input from John, and we understand from you, what could you have gotten with a 500-foot cul-de-sac, right? And we'll ask John, um, you know, what he thinks would be an appropriate length, or if this length would have been approvable. Um, or, or, that's not the right word, because we're approving it, but,
I'll ask him if he has any, uh, concerns from both aspects, safety and maintenance of the, this particular, I'll ask him if he has any concerns from both aspects, safety and maintenance of the, this particular private road going from a five-hundred-foot length to a nine-hundred-foot length.
Right.
And we'll get the feedback.
Right.
But you're not ultimately approving the conventional plan, you, you're just.
No, we're not, we're not. I mean, if, if I wanted to be black and white, I would say we shouldn't be considering waivers. So then it would be five hundred feet cul-de-sac. Then the question is, where are you measuring the five hundred feet from? You know, and that's, that's a question that we have to consider.
That would be a question, of course, for the building inspector, but I will say I do understand that the planning board has granted waivers in the past.
Mm-hmm.
So that doesn't necessarily mean it's not buildable, or, or not a proper conventional plan, just because there's a waiver.
Mm-hmm.
So there have been passed waivers and.
And so determining it, so, any other thoughts? So our follow-up's going to be talking to the Highway Superintendent. You will let us know if you had done it to five hundred, what your yield would have been. And then we will, I'm thinking at the next meeting, going to come up with the, the maximum number of lots, so that we can move forward on the cluster.
And by getting that information, how are we going to come up with the maximum number of lots?
And we're, we're going to, we're going to deliberate on the waiver aspect of it, and, you know, would we have allowed eight hundred? You know, would we allow five hundred? And come up with, come up and deliberate on what we think is a reasonable yield, something that would have been approvable by us as a conventional, and then go to the cluster.
Okay, I guess, I guess that's what it has to be.
Yeah, well, I, I think most of the information is there, you've done the homework.
Yeah, at this point, yeah, I mean, I was hoping we could do that tonight, but I guess you want to see what the Highway Superintendent has.
Yeah, I, I feel strongly about that.
The hundred feet, we'll probably end up with, with four lots.
Okay. Okay.
Because you're only going to get to that certain point here, so.
Well, you still have that one, you could get out to Scunnamunk with a, with a driveway.
So five.
That might be five, yeah.
But I know it's going to be significantly less than what this layout is.
Right. And then we'll see what John says.
Okay.
Okay?
John, is this Maple Tree Associates plan an extra, or is it your own copy?
Could, could, can you scan it for us? Can you send it to Noreen, so she can circulate it? Okay, thank you.
She want the next middle name?
So we'll put you on the next workshop.
Okay.
Okay?
Actually, I don't know, will you be able to speak to us sometime, before Tuesday?
Oh, I said workshop.
Probably not with the food truck.
Who do we have on the agenda for, how many do we have on the agenda?
Maybe we'll see him at the food truck.
Two public hearings and the one in Scunnamunk.
Yeah, I don't know, because John.
Let's not try to get to the point of having items repeat from the workshops in.
Right into the.
Three, four days in Noreen.
Okay.
I think we had a week. So it's six twenty-seven, noon.
And if we hear back from them, we can still, we can still report to you what he said, John?
If I do get, I'll share that with the board, if not, it won't be, I wouldn't say that I have an agenda.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we have minutes to approve?
They are, they've been on the agenda in January and February, they never got approved, but they've been reviewed, I have no approvals on them.
Did you bring them?
They're in your packets.
They're in our packets?
They've already been emailed and everything out in January and stuff, so I'm not, if you have time to do it tonight.
But they're in our recent packets, or the January packets?
January packets, I'm sure, no, 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 I put them in tonight's packets too. Oh, well, you know, you didn't have your set, because you didn't have them yet.
All right.
So I don't know when anybody's read them over, I mean, you read them so long ago, if you remember, or if you want to wait till Tuesday.
Uh, do you want to wait till Tuesday night, or you want to do this now? Let's see who's present.
Everybody, John has to abstain on all of them, because they were the end of last year, they, they're marked off, but I don't have anything that you ever approved of.
We don't, so for November thirteenth, we have, Anthony was here, and Jeff was here, so that's two. Can we still approve the minutes?
They were the, they were the only two.
There were only two people who were present here that were at that meeting.
Well, I guess we have.
Okay, so that, so let's just wait till Tuesday at this point, okay? Because then we'll, actually, we'll still only have three.
Just as a, a matter of, you don't actually have to approve the minutes, it's definitely good practice, and it's the most we're doing, that creates a firm record going forward. But if it, sometimes it happens, if it's changing in the board membership, that if minutes can't be approved, then they can still be.
Still filed.
Do you have to be at the meeting?
Because I think they're supposed to be filed within.
Do you have to be at the meeting to approve it?
A certain day.
Those are done.
Yeah.
I was just like, I don't have any motion on them.
We'll, we'll wait till the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. I did want to mention to the board, just advance notice, at the tech meeting after, during the afternoon, or morning, we met with Hillside and Scott, and they discussed that they're probably going to change their application. They originally were approved for three lots, and they're in all likelihood going to withdraw the five-lot subdivision, and they're going to go back to three lots with a simple lot line change to, I think, even out the property, correct? Hillside, so they're supposed to give us an official letter. This was a continuation of a public hearing on Tuesday, but we may close that public hearing depending on what transpires. And I'm trying to think, anybody else have anything to say, any comments?
I want to let the board know that I won't make Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. And one last plug, Town Monroe Food Festival Honoring Honor Flight, June fifteenth, eleven AM to seven PM, at the O and R Lakes, along O and R Road. And there will be a dial-a-bus, so that you can be picked up and dropped off if you want to park in the commuter parking lot. So we hope to see you all there, it'll be a great event.
Meet your favorite planning board members.
You see them here, you'll see them in person.
No politicking.
So with that, will someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Nobody wants to close the meeting?
All right, I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? No objections, meeting adjourned, thank you all.